Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you now, yes.
Okay.
Do we have everybody there?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll check before we get started here. Okay, it says five thirty on my clock, so I guess we'll get started. Uh, hold on, this meeting, the rest is coming to commission order. Uh, we will begin with the political leaders. All political leaders. And we're going to go ahead and just say this again. So I want you to, uh, if it's a vote for whatever you think, you know, whether they're all in the group. It was, it was reported. Uh, okay, uh, we will move to this to the previous meeting.
Move the room, second.
We have a motion in the conference room. Do we have any additional questions? Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye, aye. Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Uh, approval of the agenda. I have one thing I would like to add. Discussion on, talking on property. Is that okay with everyone, putting under their, uh, comments?
Not yet.
You're gonna have to repeat that again.
Oh, okay, can you hear me?
There's a lot of, like, backfeed.
I know, I hear it too. Can you hear me, sir, now?
Yep.
Okay, there we go. Uh, I was just asking, can we add one thing under new business, uh, discussion on cull you own property? Uh, one, one particular parcel that an individual approached me about, uh, being careful purchasing. And I'd like to know what, uh, what we'd like to put in.
Okay.
I'd like a motion to approve the agenda amendment. Okay, with, with the motion in the conference room. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Right, okay. Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Okay, good, uh, Kevin, you're up.
All right. The water board hasn't made your motion without the size covers to put in on, above the bridges. And, I don't know, do you want me to read them, or has everybody got a list of? What's there?
I'm good, I'm good.
Yeah, favorite, I'll have a list.
Okay, so we just need a motion to accept the recommendation of the water board.
Move the room, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the water board's recommendation on cull for second. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Yeah, the second item is our, uh, our mower tractor, our farm tractor, uh, won't shift up into high range. So we had, had a tight lane, and there's a, uh, a gear, a cell light, but, I have a little shift thing that won't let it go into high gear, and they gotta split the tractor and take the cab off and everything. They said it's gonna cost probably eight thousand dollars to fix it. I told them to go ahead with it, I don't know. That needs a motion, or how you wanna handle that shit.
What's the value of it?
They told me it'd cost about forty thousand to replace it.
But the value of that tractor is forty thousand?
Kevin, is that, did that thing recover any insurance at all?
No, that's just, uh, aware, I don't know where it belongs, call it.
You don't know where it is?
Prob- probably should have a motion since it's over two thousand dollars.
So. Second.
Okay, with a motion in a second to, to look, gather to get their, the case tractor repaired. Further discussion, questions?
It's got low hours, I mean, it's not, it's not erecting or anything, so it's worth that forty thousand, so.
Yeah. Okay, there's no further discussion, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side. Motion carries.
And then our nineteen ninety-four sand truck, the transmission won't shift on a first gear, and we still don't know what's wrong with that. They're having a hard time getting, uh, being able to read a computer to find out what's wrong with it. We think that it's some kind of a electrical cell light or something that's not shifting. I mean, the oil's not burnt or nothing like that, so. Probably just a matter of replacing some electric cell light on it, but we still don't know what's wrong. So I don't, I'm not even sure what that's gonna cost, but it, it very well likely could be over two thousand dollars. So again, I don't know how to handle that neither.
That's how the truck that, uh, needed the new transmission was it?
I don't know, this is on, um, our sand truck, that was on a semi.
Okay.
And that was a manual transmission, this is an automatic transmission, we can't figure out what's wrong.
Butler will work on it?
Butler is working on it, yeah. But they can't find the software, Allison's very good at typing her diagnostic equipment, and they can't find the software to read the computer, to install it.
Ardena Woken.
Pardon?
Ardena Woken. Used to work for Ken Raffin, retired over there, he used to, uh,
Pretty Crosswood School.
And, he worked out, transmissions all the way.
Did not know that.
People take it in, I think he was, uh, used to. He very knowledgeable about Allison, they all have.
Yeah, I remember that. They went and quit, it was working fine the day before, so we're thinking it's just some electrical part of it for our own.
The motion on that, or?
Probably wouldn't hurt, because I think it's gonna be over two thousand by the time we get there.
So. Second. For a way to be another.
We have a motion. Vote, is that something?
Go ahead, Adam, go ahead.
Okay, we have, okay, we have a motion in a second, uh, to get the, uh, dance up prepared. Uh, further discussion on that. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Adam, Adam, go on a conversation, I thought we would like to put theirs, you know, don't let them buy their too long, you know, too long, you know, you got a two thousand dollar bill for a fifteen dollar switch that they should have been able to figure out a long time ago.
Exactly what you're saying, I'm trying to get it from the top of it.
I saw it. Cause I, I have the same thing with one of my pickups, it's just, it's a switch that, I don't know, put the switch on, put it back together. Two minutes.
Yeah, I totally.
Yeah, I, I agree too, yeah.
Maybe if they can't figure it out, tell us if they can't figure it out, and we'll take it somewhere where they can.
Absolutely.
Okay, there's no further discussion. Okay, hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Uh, I further, Ramsey County two, I guess maybe Paul, I'll let you go with that, since you've got a little more better handle on that.
Uh, so the thin lift overlay in Ramsey County two, um, they'll be starting patching tomorrow, nine, seven, what their last date was. I'm gonna, I think they'll be, um, doing the thin lift overlay starting, uh, June 30th is the last date of this, for me to know. So there'll be, there'll be some activity there, there and at the corner of Highway two and Elstrad. Or US Highway two.
Oh, they're planning for, like, we're gonna fix that.
That little radius there, yep. There's five patches to, that'll be working on.
Were they out, or just out on old street?
Yeah.
Yeah, kinda by the cell tower off their past parade.
Kevin and I went out there and worked on it weeks ago.
On the hard side of the highway?
Uh, yeah.
Smile out to the side of the intersection off there?
Yeah.
Yeah, she took a fell one.
That was a flower. Yeah, everything looked great last year.
Yeah. All those patches.
So only question on our Ramsey County two project, that's, probably get started by the time we have our next meeting. And the next item, Strata is, uh, gonna start doing our paper patches. They're thinking maybe next week, they're in Devil's Lake right now, doing some hot mixed works, and as soon as they get that done, they wanna do ours. And it's the same spots as last year because they didn't actually get them done last year, so. And I'm estimating that's gonna cost about seventy-four thousand. I still have that in my budget, but I guess we actually have the motion from last year, so that would probably be good enough as far as bookkeeping is concerned.
Are the patches kinda all over the county, or?
Uh, there's some on, on three, uh, just north of, uh, eight, and there's some on four, south of Frizzy's Place, and right by south of, there's a couple.
What about the Rutten Bridge, you know?
Oh, yeah, if we get, if we get, uh, we'll do that, especially the north side.
Yeah, it's pretty raw coming across there. We're in charge of that old bridge, you know, I mean, Benson, are you doing that?
No, that's actually, that's the line, so we got half a bridge, and they got half a bridge.
Oh, they do have that.
I mean, you know, we, uh.
The south side could use a little bit too, so. I think that would help that a lot, if they get it.
I can talk to them about it too, and then share costs or something, and figure out something.
Yeah. A lot of people use that around. That's all I have, Adam.
Okay. Anybody else have anything in favor of patches, yeah, yeah, but like Kevin said, we had a motion for it last year, so they're doing the work we already approved, so. Okay, if we move on to the cement there.
Okay, the cement that we need for fixing our soft spots, uh, we're not totally sure how much we really need, but we got I ordered about eight thousand dollars here, but that would be a really, really good start. Well, I need a motion to pay for that, eight thousand, that gets here.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to, uh, buy, uh, cement for fixing patches, for fixing soft spots, I just said. Further discussion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same side. Motion carries.
And just one last thing, uh, uh, Gowland is using our truck route as a haul road. I don't know if you guys have been out there, but it's kinda falling apart in a couple spots, so they're gonna haul a big pile of dirt across there, so. Uh, they're working through the state, and the state is assuredness that they'll put that uh, base stabilization back in when they're done, and put gravel in there if it needs it, so. I mean, we're on top of it, but it really looks like heck if you go out there and look at it now.
Where is the dirt going?
Um, let's see, about halfway on the east-west part, about halfway in, there's a barrel pit on the south side, then they're going back out to US two.
Use it on Highway two?
Yeah, hallway there. Well, that project was all the way to Church's Ferry, there's like eighty thousand loads coming out of there. Yeah, like a huge, huge pile of dirt coming out of there.
This state highway, it's sure as this is gonna be.
Yep, in fact, I got an email that's.
We've got some records on what it was like before they started?
Yeah, we took videos, we, well, Paul wasn't there, but Gowland was with us, and we did a haul road inspection with the state, Gowland and myself helped there. Then gravelled up Jackson Woods and everything.
And it's all supposed to be done this year?
Yeah.
They didn't have any disputes, cause man, that road is horrid. Already, they're not disputing that they damaged it already?
Oh, no.
Okay. It's, it's ugly, it's really ugly. About halfway in from the west, and the south side of the road, it's good?
Yeah, about halfway. Then to the curve, then once you get going north, south again, it's fine again. That little stretch between the barrel pit and the curve. It's not even really bothering the ditch, I don't know, it's like all the other soft spots.
No, it was, I mean, it's been way too soft to haul heavy loads on any road.
Yeah. What's that?
It's been way too soft to haul heavy loads on any road.
Yeah.
There's guys that wouldn't come by in court because the roads were not taken. And I heard the same story coming out of Higgin, you know?
Yeah.
They wouldn't come by in court because they're township roads, we're not gonna be able to pay for loads here at home.
Yeah.
So, which was, you gotta admire the people for protecting their roads like that.
Absolutely. And, you know, it kinda follows that old James Town, that old corridor that got the twenty-eight inches of stone knocked over, it kinda follows that route, where it's worse. I mean, they got it everywhere, but those soft spots are the worst, where we got most of them.
It's gonna be hard to get these township roads back in shape.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, even blades been out with very difficult, you're a good job.
Takes, takes the right kind of weather, and it's. It's saturated, yeah.
Yeah. I will give them credit, the way I've seen them with the blade, they've done excellent work trying to put it back in the shape, I mean.
Yeah, they gotta get their trucks across it too, so they're, they gotta blade out there constantly in their water.
But, but even all the other roads they've gone around county that they've been down with our blades, they've, they've really fixed. You know, they're driving a fifty thousand pound grader over a road there. Five thousand pound trucks are putting ruts in, and they, I was impressed, I thought once they went in there, they, oh, hey? They got the ruts out of most of them, so. You're supposed to have it done by a freeze up?
Yeah. In fact, the next pit is, it just east, west of Pendleton away, so once they get to there, they'll be done with our haul road stuff. But that's gonna be a while, it won't be a month or two, it's probably gonna be two, three months before they get down to haul another. But, just so you know, your phone's gonna be ringing about that. You got anything else, Paul?
I'm gonna talk to the public services.
Okay, there's, uh, Kevin, we already fixed that, that, uh, step that we put in last year on the truck, bro.
What, we fixed last year?
Uh, that base stabilization, is that what you're talking about?
Right.
Yeah, they're, they're, all these soft spots that are showing up, they agreed to put all new base stabilization in the soft spots.
Okay.
Five inches deep.
Once they're done.
Yeah. The water's over there, after they, they're gonna re-fix it when they're done. Okay, last thing, we have. Okay, uh, we will move on to unfinished business. Uh, which is discussion on COVID nineteen, which I think we could pretty much roll into the, the next part of the new business, with the reopening committee recommendations. Um, I don't have the recommendations in front of me, I don't know why I wrote the ones, put it together, but my doggone printer isn't working, so. But essentially, um, our committee met, um, can't remember what day it was, it was Friday before last, I think it was. Uh, we had, uh, the treasurer, the auditor, uh, myself, emergency manager, um, uh, Crystal, uh, formation, uh, Al from, uh, Public Health, and Roger, uh, uh, from building and grounds. Uh, we, we met for, oh gosh, probably hour, hour and a half, to discuss a lot of different things, both protocol on opening, reopening the building, um, you know, the things we're gonna need to have in place, uh, to make things work correctly, or, or more smoothly, I probably is the correct word. Um, and the, the short list of bullet point recommendations is kinda where we were at coming out of the meeting. Um, of, under the recommendation of, well, in discussion with everybody off the committee, uh, and under the recommendation of, uh, of Public Health, they were of the opinion that we should continue to keep operating the building on a, um, uh, restricted access, uh, with, uh, by appointment only. Uh, and along with our operations are continuing to operate in a, a decent manner. Uh, you know, we, we haven't really had any complaints, everything seems to be operating fairly smoothly. Uh, so the thought was, uh, if, if it's not broke, don't fix it until we can see once the reopening of the state continues to make sure that we don't have a bump in pages. Uh, so that was Public Health, was that was our thought process, along with the other department heads, the elected officials, uh, they were all on board saying, let, let's push it down a little while still, and see how things are gonna roll out, and then that would be kind of our attempt to kinda roll into the, the reopening of the courthouse. Um, uh, the reopening of the courthouse specifically, we talked about things we're going to need, um, obviously more clean supplies and sanitizers. Um, uh, we, at the behind the, behind the scenes stuff going on, where we're talking about, uh, you know, uh, cause we're gonna have more employees coming into the building, how are we gonna make sure that those employees are screening correctly so that we don't get somebody into the building that happens? And that is, that is a COVID nineteen bother. Um, the emergency manager, uh, is looking for, and I don't know if he has, but yeah, I have a visit with him today, but uh, we're going to be ordering, uh, uh, thermometers, each employee will get their own digital thermometer. Uh, so we'll do, you know, checks, so they can do their own temp checks, and then they're going to have to essentially re, you know, double check the questionnaire every day that's put together that says, you know, have you, do you have any symptoms and all of those things? There is still a lot of lot, where most other businesses, especially healthcare, still do, that seem to be putting these into practice. Um, so, uh, we're, once we get that put into place, we'll have that. Um, Chris also had a line on additional, uh, anti-sanitizer restrictions, was the hope, uh, so we could, the hope, the hope is we can put them on a lot, at all. Um, entrances, as well as water columns, since those are gonna be public uses areas. If we can get enough, we don't know, hopefully we'll be able to get enough right now, but that's the hope. Uh, and then, uh, Andy was, and a line on hopefully getting, uh, full camp sanitizer system bottles, so every office would have camp sanitizer bottles as well. Um, so that's what we're working on in terms of procurement right now. Um, can't remember what else is on the list that I have there, because I don't have it in front of me, but, um, you know, working out procurement, and then the second, one, the second sheets, sort of sheets of paper you will have in front of you are the actual policy on how we're going to handle courthouse operations, as well as social distance and meetings and things of that nature. Um, and that would be something that if we decide to keep the courthouse restricted access, this is just the first draft of this, we'll continue to work on it, get it tightened up, and, and, and continue to ask for more feedback. Uh, one thing I would like to do is, at some point, I don't know if everybody else saw it, but they said, no, Trail County asked all of the department heads, sent out a survey. I'd like to get some more feedback from all the department heads on, uh, you know, operational, uh, questions, you know, staggering of schedules and things like that. Um, but that's kinda where we're at right now, uh, in terms of action point recommendations for today, plus also working on that document and getting it tightened up so that we have, uh, protocols in place. Um, we, we had some, some questions still to get answered, but I think it's in pretty decent shape, but I would still like to get more feedback from the, uh, from the, the department heads, so we make sure that when we do decide to start opening up, that it's gonna go hopefully smoothly. Um, and I, I apologize, uh, in terms of, from my perspective, in getting that together, I didn't get it together quick enough to have, unless you guys have it up, had to look it over. Uh, it's been a little, a little crazy around here, but, uh, that's where we're at, I guess, I guess, any questions from anyone or comments or opinions?
Well, Adam, uh, I went through the whole thing, um, and I, I think it's really well written and everything, and I like it, and I, I do think it puts the county in a position. Uh, the only thought that came to mind for me, that I'd like to sort of have you all consider, uh, in the event of an uncontrolled outbreak during reopening, I, I think it would be wise to have, uh, some kind of a procedure in there, or, or to empower, say, the chair of the Ramsey County Mission to, uh, sort of immediately reverse any, any steps in the opening process. You know, until such time as the outbreak would be contained. Um, because that, that is a risk, you know, we could, we could see, see no cases of Ramsey County for a week or a month to think we're doing really well, and you can, you know, might make it start, we need to have an outbreak in the courthouse. And I don't think, uh, given what we know about this, I don't think that it's prudent to say, wait until we can get the entire commission back together to make a decision on something like that, so that would be my, my only thoughts, I just wanted to put that out there to, to the rest of you, uh, for the session.
Yeah, that, that's something that can, can be considered to be put in, uh, we did have lengthy discussion with, with the committee about what happens if and when somebody comes into the courthouse that's an employee and has positive. If that were to occur, how, how would that handle? Uh, and, and I don't, I didn't put the documentation in here, but Chris will have some, has some good documentation about how, uh, we will handle if there's a positive test, now one positive test in the courthouse does that, so it means we're gonna roll back and quit opening, it just means we're gonna have to then have Public Health step in as well, do that tracing, talk about, you know, tell the employees what's going on, get people informed, all HIPAA and F M L I, that I plan to make sure that we do it in the way we're supposed to do it. Um, and that also comes back to talking about things like staggering schedules, uh, cause we talked, uh, a bit about, okay, what happens if, you know, in a cross-trading, things like that, what happens if, you know, we have a lot of departments where it's two people. So if both people are in the office at the same time, and one person gets positive, you're gonna have to quarantine the other person, even with social distancing and everything involved. So then, we're gonna have one office that's possibly being shut down for, you know, they hopefully will, still they have a work from home, if they're not feeling horrible, but at the same time, we can't necessarily affect that. So, you know, how, how are we gonna handle situations like that, we're hopefully staggering schedules to something we can hopefully fit a little bit more in, but uh, we're, we're gonna have to really, you know, figure out how we're gonna do that, but from a mass, you know, if a lot of cases all of a sudden blow up, yeah, we would have to have an expectation that we have to well, simply because we probably couldn't operate, and we have to, we have to shut buildings, or de-cleaner, I don't know what, but it would be, it would have to be good, let's put it that way.
Say, Adam, this is Chris.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, procuring some of those items, uh, is proving to be a lot more difficult than, uh, than what we talked about prior. Uh, still on, still on trying to find anything and everything we can, uh. We probably are gonna have to meet again with the committee to discuss some of the some of the issues about procuring some of them, but, uh, I'm still on it.
Chris, have you looked into any other counties on how they're approaching this? Which ones?
Uh, Cavalier, um, I also talked with Trail and Spale County, also. But everyone's having the same problems, it'd be all, everything, the whole US is wanting the same products all at the same time, so. We're behind the eight, is the production behind the eight ball, you know what I mean? I mean, everyone's wanting the same product.
We've been behind the eight ball on this all from the start, so. It's time for us to get out ahead of it.
Trying to, yeah, trying to.
After our last meeting, I picked up Minot paper on Wednesday, on the sixth of May, and there was an article in there, our Ward County was setting up their agenda on how to reopen. I don't know how that followed up, it sounded like they were gonna be very aggressive in reopening the courthouse. I don't know how it went, I haven't had a chance. Surely haven't had a chance to talk to Ward County.
I talked to Ward County yesterday.
Okay. Okay.
Their emergency manager. Thank you. They're, uh, trying to work as best as they can to work things out. It's, it's difficult to say the least.
And they haven't progressed very far?
Uh, as of yesterday, they were still ramping up this, the ideas of, oh, how, how to open.
I just got this, 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 your, I, I get that kind of feedback and I can't think of anything that they said in the room. Thank you.
How do you think, Candy? I know we have an election coming up, so not many days away.
No. Um, we've had a lot of things put into place already for election and put it out publicly that, you know.
No, I'm not, yeah. I'm all bitter.
Who knows?
All and awful after that election.
Yeah.
For, just for the fact of the election.
You know, like, like Chris said, you know, the getting, getting the things that we need and having them in place before we even open is the biggest struggle. And then keeping that supply going once we, once we get things.
I guess one of, one of the things that I was interested in when the governor opened up the schools for summer school. You know, leaving it up to the school districts to go forward with it. And I know there's school districts that are going to have summer school. I thought that was an aggressive move and getting businesses back operated and getting things, the economy moving. Like everybody is saying on a higher level, that's huge and it is. There's no question, we're going to lose business as a community that will never open again. There's no question. They can't stomach this deal. Can't make it. How are the courts? How are they doing?
So for the month of June, um, because I mentioned that most of the appearances will still be telephonic. Um, I think there's some sort of a meeting taking place tomorrow because I sent out an email requiring about looking into July and August when we start having different types of trials. How is that going to look? How are we going to keep people safe if we're having jurors come in? Um, and my understanding was there's a meeting taking place tomorrow that it's all involved in that, what types of decisions they're going to make. Uh, Walsh County, I thought had a commission meeting yesterday, maybe. I don't know what they decided, but the expectation was they were going to keep everything pretty much closed until at least after the primary. Um, Ward County, I just checked their website. We might be able to actually look at their commission meeting, which they had to think this morning. Still says the county's closed, but for courts and things of that nature. Um, so we've done telephonic appearances if we have certain trials that are taking place, if they're bigger than X number of people. We're trying to have it in a bigger courtroom so there's the ability to space. Um, that's really what's going on right now.
I guess it's probably a decision from meeting to meeting, could be my guess. Uh, but I, I'm with Candy on all and all after that election. Then give a serious thought, I guess.
One suggestion, just a suggestion I had was, uh, the sick time and how it's forgiven for, I understand if it's COVID related that the sick time could be forgiven, but like if somebody goes to, uh, have a blood test or maybe a checkup, annual checkup or something. That should still be used as regular sick time, I feel. I mean, I don't know how you guys feel. I think we should change how to reword that somehow. So that's the way that gets you.
Regular sick time is charged then or not charged to their?
Charged, should be charged against their time.
Against their time. Yeah, I think you're right there.
If it's COVID related, I get it.
Yeah, I get it too, yeah. And we've had, what, four?
Yeah.
Six?
Just a suggestion.
I was, I was going to say, I did make that, that adjustment in the, in the policy thing we put together too, because I agree. I mean, the, the thought process was at the beginning, let's just, let's just give the people either, you know, you know, either, either bodies in mind. Now we know we're going to be in this for a while, so it's going to be a strict, you know, it's something where it's a COVID related type of situation, then don't worry about it. The sick leave will be waived further than that. Yeah, we should still be using basic leave. Yeah. And I guess I can speak to that. I mean, there, I, I don't disagree. I mean, we could go meeting to meeting too. That's just fine. I mean, uh, I just put that second, that second, uh, the date back. What was the second meeting due? Uh, but if we could procure stuff and, and, uh, and get everything wrapped up the way we need to get it wrapped up. And, um, on top of that, the safety, having a, a quality, you know, in terms of a low case count like we have been. I mean, we did peak last week again, but we're back down into that two to three percent range in terms of how many cases we're getting. And that thing is continuing to ramp up where that two thousand per day, uh, hopefully will continue to move up into that three thousand per day in the next few weeks or around the end of the month. If we can, if we can, can't succeed to do that. I, I think it would be a reasonable expectation that, you know, after election day in that range. We, we can, we can start looking at how we can, or we can have that plan in place that are really procured to start, uh, opening the doors and, and figuring out how this is going to work perfectly or imperfectly, I guess, as well as correctly.
One question, I know there was testing out of, where at, at school? In the parking lot on Sunday? I haven't heard any results. Give you, Chris? Was it, they're not back yet?
Not all of them are back yet. Um, I believe, uh, there was one for sure out of that, but that was a small number of testing that would be done.
I thought they tested three hundred?
Two, two hundred and sixty-nine are tested, but they didn't get to, to process all of our tests.
We're not done with them yet.
No.
But they had one positive, you said?
One positive for sure. And I know there was some, um, more, more of Sunday's tests going through today. So we'll find out. Yeah, we'll find today or the next day. All of the tests should be completely gone through.
Yeah.
Well, I followed on that day too. I went through the testing, so. I, I got it right now. And, oh, and I won't say, uh, this is related and unrelated. Kudos to everyone that was involved with that. It was, it was streamlined. It was smooth. It worked really well. It was really well run and it was, uh, it was, it was a quality experience. So I was having to have the flop, shoving your dog a little bit. Other than that, everything was, was really, really good. So kudos to everyone on that.
So, so, I'm not sure I'm going to, I'm not going to be good, but, um, I don't know what's going on with my microphone, but it's, uh, I, I was sort of, was my temper kind of ancient, but yeah, no idea. Um, and then, uh, is this applied to living occupants or is that becoming this?
Any question?
Because people that occupy a building that aren't necessarily left to come in this.
Even probably from the aspect of, you mean, uh, the, the, just the guidelines as a whole?
Right.
I, I would say, I mean, I, I, we, we can't force them to, to do something like a deficit or something like that. I would, well, I don't know if we can or not for legality of such a thing. But, uh, the guideline from a social distance standpoint, and nobody is more than ten until we receive further guidance thing like that. You know, I would, I would fully expect that they would follow those patterns. Any other thoughts? Well, I guess I followed it. I didn't get it everyone earlier. I know you're probably looking at it. I can't see what's going on in the room, but, uh, and I get that, that's the draft, uh, we could continue and I totally expected that the committee, um, I've been, I've been farming, obviously, or getting ready to farm. So it's been kind of tough to get into town, especially with, uh, kids and everything and trying to get social distance, babysitting, things like that, or get people to watch kids. But, um, I totally expected that the committee, we're going to have to meet again or at least a couple more times to really tighten them up. If this was the first draft run at, okay, this is where we're at. Um, I, I read everything I could get on CDC guidance, on EPA guidance, on, um, on, uh, if you're going to burn out guidance. Um, you know, and, and trying to, trying to put together a model that I think will work for us. Uh, if we decide to go with something like the protocol we've put together right now, we're going to have to have, um, different departments are going to have to look at, how can we functionally social distance within our building for our employees because of some of our departments were on top of one another? Uh, you know, I, I know Al, they mentioned during our, our meeting, uh, that, you know, right now they're fine because they have certain employees from District Health that are home. Because they're not operating certain portions of their, of their portfolio right now. But once everybody gets back in the building for them, it's going to be very difficult for them just a little bit. It's because, you know, they've got a tight area to work out of. So how can we make adjustments, functionally change things? Uh, and so that we can keep our, I mean, keep our employees as safe as we possibly can. I mean, that's, that's the gap with this whole thing. It's making sure that we have employees that feel safe and, and feel like, uh, the, the, they, they have, we have their back and that everything is covered. And, and at the same time, then making sure also that the public that's coming into the building, make sure that everybody's confident that when they come in, they're going to be dealing with people that are, are taking the process necessary, make sure everything is taken care of. So that we're going to have to continue to, to, uh, you know, uh, get these protocols a little bit tighter and, and things like that. But it, it, it's a, it's a draft for, for everyone to look at and, and, you know, uh, tip in and, and, uh, and help us make adjustments so we can, we can get the pleasure on it again.
Well, I'd, I'd make the motion to go carry on to the next meeting, which is the 2nd of June. In the same manner that we've been doing.
Okay.
And the committee.
The motion, we were ever checking.
One thing to add to that.
The other motion, Adam, would be the reopening of the committee recommendations and keep working on that. Yeah.
And with the idea of reopening, with the idea of reopening sometime in June.
Okay.
Or whatever, promising, I guess. Maybe we should put it that way instead of putting a date on it.
Yeah. Well, I, I think it's okay to say the hope is sometime in June. I mean, that, that's kind of where I'm at. So the whole thing sometime in June will be able to get back to a little bit more normalcy.
Okay.
Uh, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Further discussion.
Candy, so, can I assume that the sick time will, uh, start going back to something different?
It's normal tomorrow.
Yep, tomorrow. Starting tomorrow?
You hear that, Adam?
No, I did not. I went to that camera. I'm sorry.
Uh, the sick time part, do we switch that starting tomorrow?
Um, I guess if, if anyone's the major part, I guess we can.
I put that in the motion.
Okay. Okay. The motion and second then to continue operating facilities as current and then making the switch at the same time. Uh, that sick leave, uh, will, will be for COVID or will be waived for COVID related issues, but, uh, regular sick leave will be used for all other issues. Okay. Further discussion on the motion. Okay, hearing none, none, yes, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
A poll is saying aye. Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you.
A poll of aye. Again, here again. Yeah. Uh, me. Uh, discussion on 2021 budget. Um, hard to believe that we have to start talking about the budget, but that's not that far from now. Uh, Candy and I thought we should put it on the agenda, um, uh, just so we can get some guidance on, on, uh, for the department heads, they're starting to put their budgets together. So if Candy, if you'd like to chip in on, on your thought process, it's, it's, uh, you, you've got a broader rate.
Um, I just need guidance as far as where to direct department hits as far as wages increases. Or if you want me to give a scale from one to four. Having, you know, just a step increase, no cost of living or just a cost of living, no step, like.
Yeah, I, I gave you a, they, we, Candy and I talked about it together was, um, I thought it would be reasonable to put together, and I know it's probably going to be more work for her staff to a point, but put together, um, uh, you know, a, a sheet that said, okay, um, this is what happens when we put a staff in for everyone. You know, this is the additional cost total, um, additional cost then of, uh, of, you know, of, of staff plus one cost of living and plus two cost of living. So then we know in everything we do, how much additional budget money we're putting in on each thing we decide to do, if we decide to do it. And then we also know that if there's no staff, there's no hole in that, the whole business. Um, so that way we, we, once we start to budget, if we have a, a mill app or another, you know, where we like to get a mill or a number in mind, we know if we budget in, uh, uh, say, we, you know, like we always do, we go high and try to come back a little bit. We put in a step plus two, then we know extra dollar that we pay down, uh, two to one or two just a step. Or to go seven.
Yeah, that's a good idea. That's.
Go ahead.
That's a good idea, Adam. I think we should get that, so we have some guidance, I guess, on what to do with this. You know, uh, it's going to be, I call this year.
Yeah, that's what my thought was is that, you know, and I feel like we always have that we can have the department heads, once we see what our, what our increases are going to look like with those numbers, we can then give the department heads the guidance today. Budget, uh, a step plus two or whatever, then we always can have the ability to move backwards once we start to really hold the budget down. Cause it's not, we're talking budget at the end of the day already, but, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be a tough budget this year, I'm feeling. So we, we just want to get, you know, get a good, uh, guidance for the department heads early so we can get, you know, get it all in. Is that okay with everyone then? Making Candy more work? Is that okay with you, Candy?
Sure.
Are we, are we, are we, are we, are we, are we just, for, for saying department heads put in a step plus two and then we'll work backwards or something? Is that more of what we're, what we're looking for?
I would, I would say start, start high and then you cut it from there.
Okay.
Because if you.
Go ahead.
Well, because if you. Because if you start in the middle, you know, if you go in high, then you always have the chance to take it down from there.
Oh, boy. Okay.
Yeah, of course. I don't think there's anything telling the department heads to put in, you know, whatever the step plus two of a cost of living would be. And then we can work, and then like I said, if we had numbers to know if we decided to move back, how much we're saving in each step. Or each bracket, I should say, not step, uh, then we could, we, we'd have a pretty good idea. The other thing I would add too, just in, in my thoughts right now is that I think I mentioned it a little bit at the end of last meeting. Um, uh, we don't know exactly where health insurance, um, costs are going to go. Um, obviously it's five, not even four, five months into the new year here, but, um, the first three months of the year, we were trending under, uh, so we weren't going to, we were trending under to the point where we weren't going to eat it to the, uh, into the, uh, well, what's the word I'm looking for? The dollars we got sitting in that fund at all. We were actually going to build the fund because we moved the, the number up. So that might be something where we can say, you know, we can either hold steady there or we can even back off what we're charging and still, and still. you know, we can either hold steady there or we can even back off what we're charging and still, and still end up where we need to be. So, that, that's something we'll have to keep in mind to it with, as, as we get to that, that, uh, that budget time. Okay? Any other comments I got? Okay. Doesn't sound like we have any, so I guess it means put a, put a step plus two in and then we'll, we'll use the numbers so we can back down to a meeting. Okay. On to the next, uh, discussion on future meetings. Um, this, um, actually kind of bookends, excuse me, um, talking about the budget. Um, this, uh, this webex and all the stuff that we're doing is, is beneficial, I think, cause it helps give the public access. But, um, when we start talking about it, even our next meeting is a, is, correct me if I'm wrong Candy, but, or anybody, but it, it, our next meeting, we have equalization, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, functionally, I don't know how many people are going to want to attend the equalization meeting, but we're going to, if we're going to allow people in and then still socially distance and follow the guidelines we need to follow, we're going to have to go to a bigger meeting room. So, um, my thought is, is that, and then, and then once we start budgeting, I think it's going to be beneficial if, if everyone's comfortable for us to be in the same room. If you're comfortable with it, but at the same time, then I think we're going to have to go to a bigger meeting room. So we can social distance as well. Um, cause once we get seven, eight, nine people into the commission meeting room or ten, it gets pretty tight really quick. So just a thought, um, I, doesn't necessarily need any motive or any others looking for guidance, if, if that would be okay with everyone if we decide to move down to the big meeting room or something like that, especially for the hearing next meeting, if we have anybody that would like to come in. I, I agree with that. I think that's a good idea. I, I, I do realize it's probably gonna make more work for Steve and, and the staff, cause we're gonna have to still, at the same time, provide some type of access like this for people that still aren't comfortable coming to the meeting. Um, but I, I just wanted to get some guidance today so that we have time to figure it out before next meeting if we do decide to go to, to a bigger meeting room.
I think that's a good idea. I think, uh, whatever we need to do to make, uh, technical enhancements to make that work, um, I think, uh, you know, I would give Steve the lead word to go ahead and do that.
Well, and, and anything we, if it's something where it's gotta be for public access, we can, we could probably, if, if we need to buy anything, not huge purchases obviously, but any, any small, we can, we can tap the care tax money too, cause that's what the state's doing. They're putting remote access in all their meeting rooms now and they just, I do three quarters of a million dollars or something like that. Obviously I'm not talking three quarters of a million dollars. I'm saying if we need to get less, do extension ports or something like that, so. Okay. Uh, any, any other thoughts? Uh, maybe a question?
Is there any, or if, if I may, can, is there any, um, reducing the echo down there?
It has those panels.
Did they put those up? Okay. Okay.
It's quiet.
We, we go to the panel there, but yes, the echo does cause the, ends up with a po- possibility of echo, doesn't it, yeah. But in all honesty, this is our meeting here right now when I'm listening, there's an echo. So, so I, I think what it comes down to is if it's something we can't functionally make work, well then we'll deal accordingly. But if it's something we can make work, um, you know, especially once we open up or get to opening up the building again and then it becomes more of a regular public meeting again, we're going to need additional space because, and like I said, I, I don't, I don't know how we're gonna social distance in our little rooms in there once you start getting any number of members of the public in there. So I'm not saying we're gonna be out there for all eternity, but I just think it's something we should look into, what we need, uh, to, to make it work. Okay. Anything else? Okay. I will work with, uh, work with the staff on that then, if it is something that we can make viable. Okay. Last thing on the agenda then, um, discussion on county owned property. Um, and we have Carrie in the room, correct? Cause I heard her talking earlier.
We do.
We do. All right. Um, just a little background, uh, and then I can let Carrie give some, uh, some of the legal guidance that she gave, uh, me as well. Um, I was approached by, uh, I think I can say his name, but he's, he's gonna be one that wants to buy it. Uh, the, the gentleman named Harry Holman who lives on in, um, Lakewood area. He owns a home and the county owns the property right next to him. It's a, it's a small lot. I think I looked it up on the parcel viewer. It's probably 5,000 square feet. It's a really small lot, probably 50, 50 on the front by owner. Um, and, and, but it backs up, kinda where on the west end of Military Road, curbs back. Uh, and he is interested in purchasing the property from us. Uh, he would like to do some renovations on the house that he owns right to the north of that property. And he would like a little additional room. I suppose he wants to put a garage on his home or something. Um, but it's county owned property and I have Candy do some research. Candy, you can, you can chip in with, if, if I'm wrong in saying this, but the county has owned it since 1953, correct?
Yes.
And it wasn't foreclosed or anything like that. We're not, you know, but I remember you said, we don't really know exactly how we got it.
No. I think, I think it was, well, I don't know what the water situation was in 53.
That was hurt us. Was a federal aid road at one time. They needed that piece of land for all the right of way they needed. So, let's just say a hundred years from now, if they wanna build that road back in that position, they'll need that land as right of way.
Okay.
That helps.
We have any?
It does help. We have to look at the actual deed and, 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 and those deeds for reason. Some sort of a federal situation.
Those are federal aid roads out there, bigger player.
Adam?
I lost everybody.
Okay.
Please.
I, I couldn't hear anybody there.
I think we lost you for a minute.
Um, the thought, the thought is that if it's a federal aid road, that stuff has to stand right of way then?
That's correct.
Okay.
If it's the one I'm thinking of. Is it by, um, the neighbor to the north? Is that, uh, the hot, the hot, uh, Stan Lorna? Is that the piece?
He's, he's trying to.
I'm, 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 I'm gonna tell you the neighbor of this, I do have the parcel number in front of me.
We're trying to call it up on the screen.
Okay.
I have no idea.
Yeah, if you guys, if you want to look at the parcel viewer, you can. I, I talked to Jeff a little bit just now, and he's older than the guy that made contact with me. Um, Jeff about it just in passing, just over the guy that made contact with me. Are you curious, are you able to look at it on the viewer, commission, right here?
You got it.
So, I, I spoke to the gentleman as well. Okay, okay, I'm aware of the situation. Okay.
That's the line right there.
I just wanted to bring it up because I told him I would give him an answer, one way or the other.
See, that's, that's the piece that we bought, whatever, 1953, whatever, for right of way for that road.
Okay.
It just turned out that it was squared off in that parcel. You know, it wasn't a perfect 33 feet or whatever that dimension was, we just bought a whole lot.
Well, I, I kind of wondered that myself, Kevin, just because of how that road curves back is, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't military road at one point drop down and become 21 on the shore there? I faintly remember that. It was a long time ago. So, in other words, it, it can't be sold, it can't be built on there.
Well, okay, you can do whatever you want with it, but that's why it's served for a Ramsey County, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it's the county's land, if you really wanted to sell it, you might have to buy it back again if you ever decided to build that road though.
Steve, that's it, we're inside the line?
Right there, right, right below there.
That?
That, yep.
That actually is part of the road then?
Yeah.
Is that road usable now? It appears that it is there.
We fell so there, everything. And just to the north there is where the very home is, and he wants to put a garage up.
How is he getting in there?
Uh, his driveway.
Right there?
No, maybe off the screen.
Is it that way?
Over.
So, his driveway comes into the house right here.
Okay.
Off this road.
Okay. That's a very fair road.
Yeah, that's, that's a township road there. This is our military road. This is, you know, wherever we just bought this, all this lot for that right of way, and there is no garage on that flat, but he wants to build it.
They want a part of it, or?
That's what you, when he approached me a few years ago, he just wanted a piece of it. You know, the road, our right of way would come like, we'd have to have probably this much. Because it doesn't leave any water room there. Just so you got a little more background there, I guess it's up to you guys what we do there.
Adam, are you there? Adam, can you hear us?
Sorry, yes, I can. I muted myself because my phone was ringing.
Okay. We, we were looking at the map, so we got an idea of where it's at. We don't understand, maybe you can answer the question, how much does he want of that property?
He, he hasn't really told me exactly what the lease to hold, but I think he, anything that he could buy to the road, I think was his thought process, was he would like. I mean, in terms of, obviously, he would still have, you know, right of way restrictions and stuff like that, but I think, I think that's what his thought was. I don't know exactly what he intends to do, he, he said he's been holding it for years and stuff and keeping it up and, and things like that, but I would assume there must be some type of, you know, depending on, on how the regulations work out, the township over there, you know, they have to be so far off the lot line to be able to do some addition work or whatever, he can't do it if it isn't out of the room.
Well, maybe he should put a, go ahead.
Oh, good. No, you go ahead.
Maybe he should put a proposal together to present to the commission and give us an idea of how much of the property he wants, then we know what kind of value to put on it. I, I don't know if the county should sell it, but I know Kevin's kind of reluctant, Kevin's reluctant here, so.
Well, that's, I'm glad that I brought it up in the meeting because I got Kevin, I didn't think to even ask Kevin about it, but yeah, whether the right way is to, you know, be, I think that guy tells us something.
Yeah.
Well, the county would have some cost involved in that too, creating a flat, if you did do it in some part of it.
Yeah, his thought was that if we were willing to sell it, he would, he would pay for all the charges incurred and everything like that, from a flat standpoint, and all this, all the things that it would take to do that, it wouldn't cost us anything, but other than what, we would, you know, it wouldn't cost us anything, we would just charge them up. But then that comes down to do whatever we think the lot is worth, and if it's worth, I have Carrie about it, anything over a thousand dollars would have to be bid, if I remember correctly from the email, anything under that, you can do a straight sale, so. Excuse me. But if, if Kevin is hesitant, because he thinks that it's worthwhile to hold on to the right of way, just in case we ever did have to do something with that road, to me, that's something like, that would be probably the, the better decision there.
Well, and you have those costs like into it before you're able to advertise it, you can't sell a piece of property that you can't describe.
Well, without all the property there.
So, you have, you have to have a legal description of the property that you'd be putting out for bids too, so you'd have all that plat, the platform, or sure we were getting, and title work done ahead of time.
Yeah, and, and we're not in the property selling business, it was just something where I wasn't sure how we should handle it, but I thought I should bring it in front of, of all of us so we could at least discuss it. Any other comments they have? I guess, I didn't want to have it. Okay? No comments then?
I'll advise against not selling it, if you need to.
I'll make a motion to just keep it as is.
We have a motion, do we have a second? One second, okay, just seconds, but we're going to eat property. We're in a discussion. Hearing nothing else, sorry, wait, questioning. So, we're 100% certain that we're basically required to keep that part right of way, so there's, there's no hope that that, that could be part of it, but just, just so that I'm clear.
Well, you could parcel it, yes.
Following the minimum design standards that the county established that in 2010, I think you have 75 footer right of way each way from Central Island Federal Road is the standard. So, I mean, you could keep that part if you wanted to, and sell the rest and still meet your own standard.
So, I mean, basically, what it turns out to me is that it would be a fair bit of work and expense on the county's end to even define what we could, you know, parlayed with if we so chose to do it. That, it carries that?
Yep, that's exactly right.
Right, you might recover some of that with property taxes in the future due to the increased valuation of having that garage on that property, so it'll take a lot, see that recoup.
Yeah, well, I mean, so I'm not opposed to letting people do good things on that land, but I definitely understand, you know, that there was likely a reason that the county had taken it the first way. I just felt I wanted to be more informed about kind of where, where it's at, so, thank you. Okay? Further discussion?
Then I guess the reason that they probably bought the whole piece is that when you do, well, I guess that's long enough ago that maybe this didn't apply then, but now if you're buying a chunk of land and there's damages to the remainder, a lot of times you just buy the whole parcel. Because it's not of any value to anybody.
Well, yeah, they're, they're by the parcel viewer, they, they retained the whole parcel simply, or bought the whole parcel simply because it, it's that, you know, instead of that make a re, you know, instead of that make a re, like, you know, like you said, plot, and everything you're gonna have to do, that it bought the whole parcel or half the parcel because it was easier. Further discussion?
We, we don't want him to bring in a proposal? Look at it? Maybe you only need the small parcel of it, I don't know. But you have a motion to move forward.
Sorry, I'm not trying to cut you off there. The one thing that I would think is, is if, if, for example, you know, this gentleman wanted, you know, a relatively small piece of it, so we could cheaply sell that to him for less than a thousand dollars while not being biased, and I guess would be the only way the customer has to that, that, that might still be a reasonable thing to do, especially if he's willing to pay those costs. I think where it would become very difficult even with a proposal, if he wants to, because then as it was mentioned, you'd have to put that up to bid, we can take those costs upfront, so that's my thought.
Yeah, he's the one that approached us, so, let's do what you want, I guess.
Well, I mean, I would be rather happy to visit with him again and see how much specifically he would, you know, be willing to do it, and I think the problem, like, like what we said comes in, that if we, if we wanna get it, you know, we're gonna plot it and everything like that, you're gonna have to plot it before sale, so then we have to have money into it, so we have to get our money back, well, then at that point, you're probably over a thousand dollars, you're gonna have to bid. So, then we're gonna plot something that's gonna go bid, and then if it goes bid, you can bid, you know, I guess, I don't know if it means that or not, but, you know, so it's kind of a, it's kind of a catch 42. Well, I know, I know we already have a motion that's second on the floor, that might go either way, but my thought would be if, if for some reason the motion fails, maybe Adam, you could still, you know, talk to him, and if he's really committed to wanting some small fraction of it, then, then I think it probably would be this, if there's something larger than that, I just think that it'd be, you know, too, too much of a challenge and it could go, do too many different unexpected ways, but it's probably be one way that it's still.
You know, it depends on what, it depends on what he wants it for, yeah. If he's gonna build a 50 by 60 garage, well, he's probably not approved for that, but yeah, if he's just gonna build a smaller, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. And like, with Jack, absolutely. I'm alright with that, absolutely.
Oh, would, would it be okay if everyone, if we, or I guess the neighbor, the motion was committed to all of that, if you rescind your motion and I'll help Jeff, and if you see what would work, and then we can go from there?
Absolutely, I'll submit my motion, and you can check to see how much property needs required.
Okay, and then I can tell him kind of where we're at on it, and then if he can do this, the small portion so that we can make it work, then we could maybe do something. And I don't need with Jeff to, since I think he seconded the motion.
Uh, yeah. I think everybody.
Oh, I'll contact him.
I was just gonna say, Adam, I think everybody's in agreement, so, you know, you can check with him, and, you know, if he wants to present to the commission in the second meeting in June, I'd be fine with illustrations on how much he wants, that's fine too, and then we can decide then, I guess, so. I wouldn't put it on the first meeting too, because I think we have enough to wade through them, so.
Okay, well, I'll talk to him, we'll, we'll see how he wants to go forward then. I appreciate everyone tapping in and giving us some, some, some info, or some help for me, so I got some guidance on how we should deal with it, so, appreciate that, everyone.
The brother had renovation with hot zone, it's like. We're, 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 we're directly with the community. Bring it back towards the June second meeting.
No, the other meeting. Second meeting.
Second meeting during the third decade.
Yep.
Okay, not not the June second meeting, but the second meeting in June.
This is confusing. Okay, moving on then, visitors' delegation.
Go ahead, Adam.
Uh, no, I'm just saying, visitors' delegation, we got anyone? Didn't.
Thank God, no.
Here, here. Hearing nothing, we've got, actually got reported on portfolios, we usually do that first meeting in a month. Andy wants to do a slide, anybody got anything they wanna add, I guess, portfolio, either completion?
No.
There's a, 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 and, I'm a veteran at the, down the run, the thing that did it, I was in the community, I was, I was casting for, uh, rest of the team, the paper, decided to cancel the rest that, because it'd be canceled for July 25th. So, I believe that was, I, all the people. But during, some meetings, each, we have a rest conference or legal conference, kind of a change of, of, you know, meeting or thinking. So, the rest, at the point, we're going to recommend that they don't, that, or reservation for an operation, that the rest operators, the pumps, and it has, uh, designed for, they have therapy and plastic on frame, uh, there's aspects, and that the operation will set when, uh, really here is the right, and put the pumps in place, that the community shouldn't be deciding, that the community should be deciding that the pumps operate when, uh, when they meet the standards, for game one, heat on three, so. Our other two opportunities were canceled as well, and there are two throughout the state, uh, so I'd say, people who live across the state, and for a, I think, for a, probably wasn't the best idea, so, uh, better education, population, and department on those, and sponsor for the other eight tours throughout the state, and there was a better decision on that.
Okay? Anybody else that has a portfolio or announcement, anything of that nature?
Well, ruffle feathers, just because Jeff made a comment about, we're not gonna have the water thing, but yet, Minnesota people are over here fishing. The roads are packed.
I don't know if you guys are reading, I'm listening. I remember that, I remember that, for the, the show, right through someone back in, in, early eighties, um, and I'm really, very reluctant to say that fishing was, it gave us to do that, like, first of all, to the state, but they kind of, they're just, you know, fishing, twenty-four hours, and somehow the person, personally, better equipped that, uh, ran here, and so, it was a concern, I believe, to have a concern with the construction on Highway Two, now that it's found, it's just too many traffic through Channel Way, and we're looking at possibility shutting down shore fishing on the rest of the state or over there, um, or kind of gaming fishing, however, we're attempting to try to limit that access, because you put the Channel Way, it's a, from, you know, fifty to two hundred cars parked there. And, uh, when we go out, another lane of traffic to the, to, to create a very dangerous situation.
Well, I don't think they'd let you park in any other route zone within, in the clear zone. Well, I just haven't, nor, nor marking signs.
Sounds like that's a game of fishing highway department problem, not ours.
Right.
Just a, a quick, non, non-announcement, really, the Delaware Public Library elected to remain close to the public, at least for the remainder of this, uh, into the middle of town, for most of my next library for me, uh, but books, movies, and all of that are still available to check out, just to call the library, and I'll prepare it for you. Uh, so, that's all I have. Okay? Anybody else? Anything? Doesn't sound like it, I was gonna say, the only thing I can think of is fish, it should be the easiest thing to social distance that, you gotta, you gotta pull for the mother guy. It should be, one way or the other, and if somebody hits you, pull, you're just out of the hole.
Don't happen.
Yeah, side of the time. Okay? Anything else for the other order? Hearing nothing, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Last on Highway Two, one lane. North of the road?
Westbound.
Westbound.